Good morning, Board members, administration. This morning, I am going to speak a little bit about the later start times. I do support the initiative based on the research, which has been around at least 20 years, because I remember hearing about it in 7th grade. And I know that back then, I was all about, yes, let's start later so I can sleep in. My daughter would agree with that, too, as she's in 10th grade right now. What I'm concerned about is this $50 million price tag that we're looking at, because I'm a voter and a taxpayer. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that if suddenly this $50 million appears somewhere, I would be suspicious of that. I also think that while we're hearing from a lot of folks, and I'm glad to see so much engagement on it, I don't think we're hearing from everybody that we need to. I will say that I've been seeing that there's support from Dater High School, which is where I serve on LSDMC and where my daughter goes. I don't know who's been spoken to there, but no one's spoken to our LSDMC. I don't think anyone's spoken to a staff complement, because nothing's been communicated to us. And there are a lot of kids who have very real concerns about if they switch to a later start time, what does that mean for when they get out? What does that mean for their extracurriculars? Or if they have to work to help support their families? So I want to support this, but I have reservations. I think we really need to nail down the issues with transportation and talk to more folks before we can talk about implementation. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jilda Vargas Adams. I'm a CPS parent, a pediatrician, and part of this group of healthy school start time advocates. We're wearing yellow. Thank you, Member Copeland-Dansby, for joining us. This is daylight when children should be going to school. We're here because we know these transportation decisions are happening soon. We're also aware that there are no firm estimates right now on cost, although we are committed and have a group of talented data analysts ready to look at the transportation data at Metro to find efficiencies that would be cost neutral to move more students and more schools to a healthy start. We also know, as you are all aware, the evidence is irrefutable in terms of what later start times do for mental health, which is so important, especially right now, health, academic achievement, and how very valuable these moves are in the arena of equity, because we know that students living in economic disadvantage and students with other challenges benefit even more from fixing their school start times. This cannot be underestimated. Communities, students, and families respond positively to this. There are a majority of people who have been asked about this issue in survey after survey. Thank you for all of the due diligence. This community wants to see healthy school start times, and the time to begin to fix it is now. I want to demonstrate to you how many people came here on a snowy, horrible day during their workday, during the school day, because this really matters. Many of them will be leaving before this meeting is over, because they have other commitments. But don't expect us not to be back. We're here until it's fixed.
Thank you. So we're at the item on the agenda for presentations. Superintendent Mitchell, would you introduce our presentations, please?
Gladly. And I actually will move down to the center area, along with our Treasurer, Jennifer Wagner. We're going to present to you this morning how we went about looking at the budget process as it relates to priorities. And so although the title of this presentation says "Budget," this is really about the priorities first, and then the budget that goes along with it to support it. So obviously, we started with the board priorities that were established in October in terms of thinking about being student-centric, working on the strategic plan, which we will have by the end of June, as well as really exploring growth of our district in terms of expanding our footprint across the city, community engagement and influence, efficiency of systems, and safety and security. So this year, we took a very different approach to really looking at how we do our work as it relates to setting priorities aligned to the board's priorities, and then a budget that goes along with it. And so we started off this year with a mission margin matrix that identifies those things that are high mission, high impact, high cost. High mission, high impact, low cost. And then you see low impact, high costs, low impact, low cost. To really be able to say, as we spend our dollars, let's make sure that we're only putting our money towards those things that have a proven track record of being successful within the district. And so this is the way it looked. So we created a huge document, a chart, and then we spent about a half a day with all of the leadership team members, going through and identifying all the major business lines that they support in their department, and putting those business lines on a post-it with the amount of money that it costs, and then laying them in the different quadrants, so that we could really get a visual in terms of those things that we should stop doing, that we can't show that there's actually a return on investment in terms of the dollars spent. So as you can imagine, this was a hard conversation, because in some instances, someone may have a sticker or posted in the high-impact area, but when we really looked at it and talked about it, it was really a low-impact area. So this helps us identify those things that we should absolutely stop doing, so low-cost, low-mission. So those things that are not on our mission, and they are high-cost, we should stop doing. The things that are low-cost, low-mission, we should explore whether or not these are things that might move up into the high-mission area if we put some additional work into it. So these are things that you might consider saving. Where we really want to land is high-mission, low-cost. And so that really goes to the efficiency of our district. We want to make sure that we're so efficient with our dollars that we can do things extremely well, but do them at a low cost to be able to free up money to support new innovation. So when I think about our work moving forward in terms of that model, we've asked each leadership team member to really think about your department as a business, and to outline what's the data that we need to collect to support, because those items that you say are high-impact, we need to be able to have the data behind it to actually show and prove that it's high-impact. And so what we're going to be doing as we lay out our priorities aligned to the board's priorities for the upcoming school year is going about the data collection to actually show whether something is high-impact or low-impact, to do the analysis, to be able to conduct interviews with our team to really push on those business lines, to explore other opportunities with the PLT, and then quite honestly, to be able to create an inventory of businesses and products that are aligned to high-mission. So again, we want to do this in all of our work across the district. We want to identify those products, partnerships, and companies that are truly aligned to our mission and have a return on investment in terms of high-impact. So in thinking about each department as a business, this year, what I've asked each leadership team member to do is to identify the three big priorities for next school year aligned to the board's priorities, and to outline the goals, and then to very specifically say those business lines that support those goals. And they have to be very specific about it, and then outline the strategies that they're going to use for the upcoming school year to measure the impact of the dollars spent towards the priorities and the goals. Which then leads us to this pyramid that we're going to be using. So we look at the pyramid in terms of, it's a triangle technically. The bottom part of the triangle are your core services and commitments. So each leadership team member has identified what are the four core services that we provide from our department, and the strategies that are on the side are the strategies that are lined to the previous page. In order for you to be able to have access to money for new programs, your strategies that you said you were going to commit on all must be in green. And so what we're saying is that, quite honestly, you earned the right to do new stuff, but let's make sure that our core business is taken care of first. And those strategies that are red and yellow, then those are prime opportunities for continuous improvement projects. So this is a completely different way of doing business. It's a real return on investment, looking at our core services and making sure that we're doing those things well to be able to reallocate funds to be able to support new things. And so that really goes back to this idea of high-mission, low-cost. As we are going through the strategic planning process, we will keep all this in the forefront of our minds and a part of our work moving forward. This coming Friday, Engage to Learn will be here, and they will be spending a day with leadership team, where we can talk about this timeline, talk about the board's priorities, talk about all the information that has been gathered from the community thus far, whether it's the STEP community, or the district-wide LSDMC, or the information from the survey that was taken around transportation, pulling all of those data pieces together to really help inform the strategic plan moving forward. So that lays out our work in terms of how we're going to structure it as it relates to priorities and return on investment. And then we set out a timeline in terms of those things that we believe need to happen from now until June to really have a business plan that's aligned to the strategic plan and the dollars to flow to support that plan, all aligned to the district's priorities moving forward. And now Jennifer will talk about the actual budget process, but we felt it was important for you to see all of the behind-the-scenes work that we're doing on strategy and priorities that lead to the budget process.
Thank you, Laura. And before I start, I just wanted to apologize to the board and the public for my voice. I'm going to try to get through this without squeaking too much. This is a gift for my grandchildren. So the process for building the budget is truly a collaborative effort with the Budget Commission, the board, the leadership team, the schools' principals, and their instructional leadership team, and local school decision-making committees. So this is kind of a visual of what it looks like, the whole process at a high level, where the board starts off by setting its goals for the year. The leadership team then does the annual scope of the strategic initiatives, like My Tomorrow and IMCPS, Vision 2020, and then the schools and the departments do their work. But the Budget Commission, that's made up of parents and community members, school-based personnel, union leadership, and the administration, work alongside and monitor the process and give us feedback as we move along. I think we've had at least three meetings already this year. And then on the other side, the public gets engaged through our budget hearings, once we get further along enough to actually produce some data for them. So the whole process really starts with the October forecast, where we set our general fund budget target so that we can maintain appropriate cash balances moving forward. We're trying really hard to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And so that, for those who know me and my corporate background, I'm absolutely thrilled with this new process of high-mission. Chief financial officers across the nation are really struggling with how to calculate a return on investment for academic spend. It's really difficult, because one spend may have, or one academic measure may have had multiple investment spends on it. So now, when we start it with the investment, it'll be a lot easier to measure that success. This is kind of a timeline that Laura kind of already shared with you, where we actually start with student projections every October, the financial forecast, and then we just move along the process. The schools come first with their base staffing, and we started a brand-new effort this year on equity spend. So the process for the schools is they receive their student projections in late November, early December. This year, we actually gave them their base staffing allocations based on collective bargaining agreements, state law, and then district formulas. And then from there, they analyze their needs and determine what they needed to support their school's success through equity. So we created an equity ask. And after that, we analyzed and allocated out all the non-personnel, and then the schools looked at all that according to their one plan, if they were a Title I school, and developed and submitted a budget back to the district administration in order to support that one plan. So just want to remind the public and then the board, back in the late '90s, we used to do a student-based budgeting, where we allocated dollars based on the conditions of the students, projected students. And it was difficult to manage because of mobility throughout the year, and the fact that we can't just pull a teacher out of a building mid-year and rearrange our children. It's not academically sound. So we, back in the early 2000s, when we were struggling financially, we went to student-based staffing, so we just focused on the formulas, the base staffing formulas, and tried to minimize budgets. And this year is when we actually moved into the whole equity-driven process. It was really a fascinating process to watch and be a part of, because we started with this document. So it really started with, we created a budget improvement team with several staff from the Treasurer's Office and some volunteer principals on how do we make the process better for you, for building next year's budget. And they kept telling me that, Jen, the formulas are equal, not equity, and my school is different than this school, and I have different needs from this other school. And we started thinking about all the different elements that would come into, for me to create a formula for them to create equity, and it was mind-boggling. And so when I was talking, sharing that with a superintendent, she goes, Jen, why don't we just ask them what they want, or what they need? And so we created this formula. The assistant superintendents worked really hard to create this. So we set this form out, and I've circled two important factors on there, that every ask that they submitted back to us had to be connected to a data element of what they were going to improve on. And the IOT also had to sign off on it, so that we knew that there was collaboration and agreement and consensus in the building. Then the leadership team spent two full days together going over this, using a rubric of significant movement. So the investment that the school wanted had to show a significant movement on that data element that they were trying to target. We actually saw some, it was a beautiful process to watch, because they actually, over the two days, they would actually challenge each other and say, well, wait a minute, we didn't agree to this on this day, but next, you know, this school's asked for the same thing. And so it was really, a really cool team collaborative effort. But we also noticed some trends that popped out on the asks. We saw a lot of asks for more assistant principals. You know, things have changed in the school building on the administrative side with evaluations and IEP requirements, and discipline, and culture. And so we thought, well, you know, it's time for us to revise our formula. And so we did. And so we allocated, I think, three or four more assistant principals, but we also gave some in equity as well. There was also a lot of asks for school social, increased time as a school social worker. The base formula allocates to the schools one day a week for every school, and then they can add it as their financial resources allow them to do so. But through the equity, they started focusing on social-emotional growth. And so Ms. Bunty and her team have actually created a new plan for maximizing the skillset of the school social worker to work on social-emotional stuff, and so that allows the more clerical attendance-taking and reporting duties to other staff members, so we can take advantage of their highly-skilled master's degrees. Another huge ask was on tutoring. And so we've shifted from instructional coaches to tutoring, and so it's more dollars that are focused on the individual student's needs. And so the equity result added $4.3 million to the school budgets, which is pretty significant. I'm just showing you some major categories. We spent over $1 million on tutors, another million on additional teachers that are in the building, whether it was programmatic, or P art, music, fine arts things, social workers, and then also paraprofessionals to help with their programmatic, social-emotional needs. We've also created a general ledger account code that has a Q in the special cost center, so that we can actually track all of our equity spent, not just the budget side, but the actual spend, and then tie it to the measure that the school said they were going to achieve. So under the school budget staffing, the base staffing includes all the class-size elements that are dictated by the collective bargain agreements. PAM stands for P art, music, the fine arts allocations. They get one body for every seven load-bearing teachers, their paraprofessionals, school social workers, clerical formula, plan operators, assistant principal. This is a formula that we changed. I think we lowered it to 550, and then every building gets a principal. So essentially, we focused on, you know, the Department of Student Services knows the needs of those students on IEPs and 504s, and so they actually allocate. These are the special-needs teachers that need to support those students. Our English language learning staff is growing, because our students are growing in the district, and individual pairs are required by IEPs. And school suspension is related to the effort towards the district, and actually across the nation, in order to create safe cultures in the schools, and the new law about not suspending the younger children. We've added significantly to the security assistance. We're saying that you can't, as a school, these are important non-negotiables, we're funding them, and we don't want the schools to trade them in for other things, so these are something that are significantly important to the district. And then we added a bunch, several counselors, I won't say a bunch, but we realized that the children that are in the K8 buildings, so seventh and eighth graders, aren't getting counseling support as the seventh and eighth graders in the 712 buildings. So we've added some counselor time to the K8 building, so that those students have equitable support. At the bottom, I was just giving you an example of some of the equity requests. I've already covered most of them, but there was some software and additional instructional supplies that came along with those. So another new tool that we used is we redesigned. We used, we're getting away from the old Excel spreadsheet system, where you can't manage version control, you can't consolidate and do analytics on it. We created our whole budgeting process in OpenGov as a budget module. And so the schools actually, the SBS stands for student-based staffing, so all those formulas that we loaded are in the student-based staffing. And then the other side of that is where the schools actually dictate. We give them a non-personnel allocation per pupil, they tell us how they need to spend it, whether it's on structural supplies, or meetings, or textbooks, office supplies, that kind of thing. And that's joined together to create the school budget. So these are the areas. OpenGov is organized by tiles. And so we have the base formula that we've already gone over. We also have an area called programmatic adjustments, and we've been doing this for probably five or six years. It's really equity, before we called it equity. So some examples of that are the schools, the Montessori schools who have membership dues, they couldn't afford to buy it out of their base formula to pay for those dues, so the district paid for that, because the Montessori is a strategic initiative. New Tech, Akin New Tech Network membership fees, or additional, one school needed additional security guards because of the traffic flow on busing and stuff like that. So in the future, we're probably going to merge the programmatic adjustments and the whole equity thing together, because it really is all equity. And then the column to the, the third orange column are the performance leadership team non-negotiables. Those are the things that we said, these are base things, and that are important to us, and we're just going to put them out in the school buildings. And then we add all the things that were approved through equity, through the leadership team, we put in the school budgets for them. So this is kind of a primary picture of the principal dashboard at OpenGov to build their budget, so they just click on these little tiles whenever they need to do something, and then it all consolidates together in a report to show them their school budget. And as new things come up, we'll create other tiles for them to work on, and new strategic initiatives. So having said all that, all that is being collaborated, and we're taking the board's strategies and the priorities, and I saw on my desk this morning the very thorough and robust board budget priorities that we will go through, send it through our new process emission matrix to make sure that we're in alignment, and if there's anything that we missed, we'll certainly consider that for the budget. We already have been working on our current strategic initiatives, mainly My Tomorrow and Year Five, Vision 2020 is coming up on Year Four, IMCPS, and then the whole development initiative. And so every one of those things is sent through a lens of equity, just to double-check that we're, we're staying to our mission there. And then we're getting, once we get through the board budget priorities, we're going to kick off the centralized budget system, which we'll also use OpenGov, similar to what the schools did, and then together, that'll consider a consolidated and balanced budget to serve our needs. Our goal, typically, we come to the board at the very end of June, the last board meeting in June, to ask for budget approval, and then we ask you to increase, approve the resolution for appropriation, so that I can start paying bills on July 1. Our target this year is to get that done before June 1, so we can load the budgets for the principals to start doing their contracts for the new year in a timely manner. So our next steps, one is, after receiving this today, to align the board priorities. We're going to complete the central office budgeting process. We start with our first public engagement, as scheduled for March 19th at Woodward High School. And I think you're going to see a really different way of engaging the public with the superintendent and I. And then on April 17th will be the second one, after getting feedback from the board and the public on where we stand with the budget. In 25 years of the district, we've never come in under our budget target, in terms of the ask is always higher than the targets. We always have this work to do to decide how to scale back to meet our budget target, so that we can maintain fiscal responsibility through the five-year forecast. And then the last part is, my target is to get the board approved by June 1. So with that, I'll entertain questions.
Okay, board members. Anybody have questions? Mr. Messer?
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell, and Treasurer Wagner. Sorry, I said, thank you, Superintendent Mitchell and Treasurer Wagner. I don't care if you're at a school, or at a business, or at a nonprofit organization, what you demonstrated was one of the most sound processes I've seen in kind of this budget process that clearly defined priorities, things you talked about was aligning on high-impact versus low-impact, you used the word return on investment, you used data-driven decision-making. decision-making, all things that, that, you know, I think are exemplary processes to put in place when you're thinking about dollars. And I will say, just on behalf of taxpayers, thank you very much for that. And I think it's an asset. What you just described, if our community knew the level of detail that you put into it, I think it would give so much reassurance, even more so than they have today, because not all organizations are operating in this way. So kudos to you for that. You know, just a couple of things, you know, fully aligned on the process, a couple of things that I noted that I would just like to get some, kind of, where do these fit into the budget? If they're, so in the, in the school budget, my guess is this comes outside of the principal's budget, but is there a process where we say, here are the 10 things that, that need to be fixed or changed or upgraded or resources we need in our school that's more of a physical upgrade? We need another bathroom. We need a, an extra preschool, you know, bathroom in their wing because of quantity or whatever. Or X Y Z broke over the past school year and that's going to be an investment. Or we transitioned these locker rooms into classrooms and they don't have whiteboards. Where does that fit? Is that within the school budget or is that a completely separate? And then what's the process for us bringing in those issues and then building them into our plans?
So that's a great question. So initially, the first answer is we have a fund that's set aside, it's called Fund 34.
It's what?
It's a facilities maintenance fund. And we're required by an agreement of taxpayers in Ohio State, State of Ohio, that we set a mill, half a mill aside every year out of our general fund budget to fund the maintenance fund because we spent a billion dollars making these beautiful buildings. And what our public and legislators didn't want us to do is build all these buildings and then not maintain them appropriately. So every building has their own maintenance plan, so some of the things would be covered in that. Some of the other issues on, you know, like smart boards and stuff like that, usually as, those are covered through our strategic initiatives. For like My Tomorrow, when we decided by each grade level, we were going to add a one-to-one initiative, that would be part of that annual budget, not the school's budget. Capacity expansion is something that we're struggling with because we are at, because we did a billion dollars and we led the country and, or I'm sorry, the state in the facility master plan, because we only got reimbursed by 29% from the state where Cleveland gets 78% reimbursement, our taxpayers had to help fund that through a bond levy. And so we are really at our debt maximum right now. We're making, we're paying down that debt, we're making good progress, but we don't have the ability to go out and borrow more money. So we really struggle with, how do we, you know, handle that? And so the Mercy Purchase was a very strategic and creative way of financing, called a COPS, a certificate of participation, where it acts like a capital lease. But you have to have margin in your budget to pay that lease payment every year. And for us, that particular budget is 1.2 million dollars. So we don't have the ability to go out and sell more cars to generate revenue. We got to stay within our property tax calculations and our state foundation formula. So that means something else doesn't get paid for. So we are lobbying to the state of Ohio for more capital funds. We are working with our debt council on, you know, maybe some more creative ways to help us expand. The other issue that we'll be presenting in this budget cycle is the expansion of preschool. And that the, since their preschool promise has been using a lot of their funds to help with quality improvement on the centers that aren't three, four, or five-star rated, while we're struggling to expand classrooms because we have waiting lists. And so we're going to propose in this year's budget to use some of those funds to help us expand the facilities the capital needs for preschool.
To your point, Port Member Messer, we should have a, a facilities review process so that we can set a schedule in terms of here are the five buildings we're going to work on this year or 10 buildings. And so that's definitely something that I'll take back and work with Scott on so that we can ensure that our buildings are kept in a way that's decent and presentable and good for our kids. The second thing that, on that point is, yesterday I did meet with our two lobbyists regarding some of the board's interests around lobbying through policy at the state level and as well as funding. And one of the things that I had a conversation with them about was about the dollars to be able to purchase new facilities, but also the dollars to be able to renovate our existing ones. And so scheduled in April, I will be going to Columbus, meeting with legislators and inviting two board members to go to really talk with legislators about some of the funding issues and also some of the policy issues. And that's one of them.
So most of you board members weren't around during the facility master plan levy and the build-out. And so I just want to remind you that the state's projection people, I can't think of them right now, but they projected us to be at 28,000 students. So as we were building the plan, we were cutting buildings out of the plan in order to stay within that $28,000 or 28,000 student projection. Well, we're well over 36,000. And we're forced, we have, you know, capacity issues. And so, and the state of Ohio kind of got it wrong. We were able to regain a market share, which we're really proud of, but it does present some financial challenges for us. And so I just wanted to remind everybody, it's not for a lack of planning, it's a lack of support from the state in terms of our growth.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you for the report. Appreciate it. It's so important. Just several very specific things. I like the idea that you earn the right to ask for new stuff. I think that's great. And then I would say that there's one diagram here that you probably want to change just a little bit, just because in other parts of the presentation, it's called, it's called Board Activities. You mentioned the, in later pages, the hearings are in March and in April, and in here, it's, the hearings appear to be in May and June. So you might just want to, just, just as a public document, so there's no confusion about that, that'd be great. And thank you for moving those hearings up, both the administration and our engagement folks. On the next page or so where it says school budget building process, it would be helpful, unless it's wrong, and I don't think it is, to, to say that the L S D M C does a little bit more than approve. You might want to look at the language, that they might have more of a participatory presence in the budget than that might indicate. And I'm not sure if they do, but I think we're starting to operate under the assumption that they are, so maybe we have to check the language. And then Mr. Messer asked the question about physical plan, so that was great. I do have a question on school budget staffing. The class size limits are contractual, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the P A M allocations, are we able to say that in every one of our schools there is P E, art, and music?
Yes.
In some way, shape, or form? We are able to say that when we go to the public for the renewal?
And, and one of our presentations in the public will be an analysis of that to show that.
That's great. That's what we need. And then also, when does the I E P writing start? Because that has a tremendous budget impact as well. Is that a, for both transportation and instruction and placement?
It depends on the needs of the child. So it occurs on the anniversary date of when it was first created.
So it's a staggered?
Yes.
System, which financially is difficult?
It is here. That's the law.
Absolutely. Is there any way that, I guess you probably measure trends, even though it's individualized, as to anticipate that? Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Thank you Superintendent and Treasurer Wagner. We really appreciate this. This is great. I think we look forward to hearing in the next step because for me, it's exciting, especially with that process of high impact, high cost, because I think it gives us an opportunity also to see kind of where our requests fail. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. We are excited about this new process. Jen and I are both process people, and so it makes us very excited to have this new process. So it's great.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So now Superintendent Mitchell will introduce our second presentation on transportation.
Yes. So this presentation is a follow-up to the presentation, or actually the transportation summit that took place a couple months ago. So just in terms of doing some background and laying the groundwork and bringing to everyone's recollection what we really are focusing our efforts on, safety first. And so we heard loud and clear from the board that you want to make sure that the kids are safe and that you want to be able to know the location of the buses, which helps our parents feel a little bit more secure in knowing where their kids are in terms of where the bus is. So safety is our first and number one priority. And so that will be, some information will be presented about that today. In addition, the board is very much interested in, as well as the administration, around customer service. And so customer service in terms of buses arriving on time and then dropping our kids off on time back home, in addition to the communication between the central office and the vendors and parents. The third big area that we focused our attention on is the late start. And so you'll hear some information about the late start. You will hear a case study that gives you an example of what this could look like for one school. It is in no way, shape, or an example in terms of a pilot. It is a case study example only. And the fourth major area that the board asked us to focus on is the cost. And so I'm going to be very upfront and very transparent now. I cannot guarantee you right this minute that we will be able to come to you with millions of dollars of savings right now. But what I can demonstrate through the work, and it's really not my work, it's the work of Lauren Johnson, our new treasurer, Transportation Director, that he has done a very thorough analysis, specifically, first of all, starting with Metro, because the decision has to be made regarding Metro by March the 15th, the 15th. And so you'll see a very thorough analysis of Metro. And then there's some analysis on yellow bus, and then we're going to do additional analysis on yellow bus. He will be able to show you some cost savings today. It may not be as much as you anticipate, but again, there is a strategy to have significant cost savings. Just also to remind the, the board and the public, re-transport over 33,000 kids every day, CPS, non-public and charter. We currently have five vendors that we work with. Our kids, in terms of transportation, we travel 9,500 miles each day with 1,500 bus routes that run every day. So I thought that information would be important as we set up the context for this presentation. And I'll turn it over to Lauren, our Transportation Director.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
I'm greatly appreciative to actually be before you again to kind of go over transportation. I will remind you that this is day 66 for me, and just to give you a little precept. But our plan here is really to outline some things and initiatives that we're working on to truly transform our transportation department. It's something that I kind of overheard one of our colleagues said is, we're not looking for perfection, we're looking for excellence, right? But we're going to still strive for that perfection. All right? So let's get underway. Okay, so I want to talk about routing and planning, how we can leverage our resources to meet the needs of our students. Pretty much it boils down to four factors, key factors, that contribute to our transportation and how it is. Policy. Members of the board, you guys determine a policy, which guides the work that we do. Personnel, our bus drivers, bus aides, dispatchers, our internal personnel, management, and our resources, the amount of vehicles that we actually have within our community that we could denote to transport in our students. So as Superintendent Mitchell stated, that we have over 1,500 routes. Just to give you a grand scheme of things, First Student has 205 yellow buses, 29 vans that they're dedicating towards transporting our students. Queen City has 127 yellow buses. Peteran has 25. Metro is dedicating 105 resources to us. I didn't give you a number for U T S because that is, fluctuates based on the students that we have within McKinney-Vento or R S P E, all right? But on average, I could tell you yesterday, they utilized 66 vehicles for us. So it gives you a scope of the work that we're doing every day. So I wanted to give you a case study regarding our bell times and how we could appropriately leverage our resources by doing some policy review of our standardized bell time. So I took 12 of our elementary schools, and as you see there, Pleasant Hill, William F H T A F, A W L, and all of them have various bell times from 7:30, 7:45, some end at various times from 2:15 to 2:30, some start at the latest 8 o'clock. And so if you take 12 schools with varying start times, and let's just say for simplicity, they all need one bus to transport their students, I would need 12 buses to transport all those students. Now, given the rates that we have currently underneath contract, the average rates of all our vendors, that will cost an annual cost of roughly $55,000 per bus, with an annual total cost of $660,000 roughly, just to transport all those students. So if we take that same model and we restructure our bell times to a two-tier model, say for instance, 7:30 to 2:15, and at 8:45 to 3:30, we will then be able to do that same volume of transporting one bus for each school, but only have to need six vehicles to do that transportation. So what you will see is, yes, your cost per vehicle will go up because the time of that vehicle on the road will increase, but you're only looking at $74,000 in that sense, but a grand total of 44, $440,000 roughly to transport those same number of students with less vehicles. That's a 50% reduction in the resources and personnel that we'd be utilizing. In addition, that'll be a 33% decrease compared to a single-tier model. Now, the grand scheme is if we could achieve a triple-tier model. This is then setting up standard times, three separate tiers, and putting all our schools in these three tiers accordingly. Essentially, we would take what would used to be 12 buses to transport all these students, I would essentially only need four buses. This will look at a grand scheme of annual cost of roughly just over $400,000, a 67% reduction in our resources, but also a 30, 38% reduction in annual costs. A couple other things regarding yellow bus routing and planning, the live-attend analysis, just to give you a grand scheme of the distance that we're traveling out of the neighborhood boundaries. Take, for instance, Riverview East Academy, 62% of those students are outside that, that boundary. Roseland Conlon School, because it does have a high special ed units there, 42% is coming outside of that area. Silverton and T A F, these are interesting schools because they are both combo magnet and neighborhood schools. So they have the highest numbers of 66 and 65% of those students are outside that, that area. I also gave you Frederick Douglass, the highlight, at 41%, and Kilgore at 38%. So yellow bus routing and planning, also looking at comparative analysis of our magnet schools compared to our neighborhood schools. And so we selected Dater, Sands, Midway, and Mount Washington as our examples to differentiate. So capacity is one of the things that leads to efficiency. And so if you look at it, 62% of the buses that are dedicated to magnet were at 62% capacity. With neighborhood schools, we're operating on an average of 71%. That is a, a large difference when we look at number of vehicles that we need to allocate to provide the transportation. The other area that we look at is time. Some, some of our students' time is a factor. If you look on average, our magnet schools, our route time is up to about 58 minutes. For our neighborhood schools, it's 40 minutes. If you look on a daily total, that's almost If you look on a daily total, that's almost an hour difference, an hour of our students being on the routes, traveling at time every day. So, we need to be cognitive of that factor there. The other piece of it is cost. Looking at all those schools and separating out the sped costs, because I don't want that to inflate the numbers. But you see the cost with our neighborhood schools is lower than what it does for our magnet schools. So, just to give you guys a frame of reference of that as well. So, the other piece of it is, is Metro, our high school transportation. Giving you guys some other data regarding the Live-It-In analysis with that. And I'm going to highlight Euler, because they're the lowest, has the lowest number of students coming from various areas at 21. Then, we have Riverview East, which is the only school that is like non-Monasori, not the SCPA, not Walnut Hills, or Virtual, that also has 32, but it's just a regular high school. But they're drawing students from 32 neighborhoods. So, looking at our regional boundaries, we have a divide, east and west. But is it really enforced? By school of choice, we look at it as a Withrow case study. We're taking the old boundaries, school boundaries from 2001 school year, and then, we did an overlay to actually show, in the blue, where Withrow is, but the students, with all those dots, are students coming from other communities going into Withrow. Another big thing, and I like to say this now, is Metro, we have a very great partnership with Metro. And so, we've been working with them tirelessly to come up with more efficient ways to transport our students. But I also want to give you a highlight of our students actually crossing the district to go to other high schools. And so, if you look at this time, this is a real student, okay, that lives out in the Withrow area, or Schroder area, I should say. And if you look at the times, it will take them an hour and a half roughly to get to This is the plan that we're putting in place for our students. An hour and a half, three hours a day, and commuting across district just to go to a school. Schroder, case example, we have a student that is in the Aiken area that travels all the way to Schroder. Again, look at the time factors, an hour and 23, an hour and 33 minutes, hour and 24 minutes just to get to school. Looking at our Monasories, same thing, one hour, going across district. Clark, the interesting thing about Clark here is, this student has a unrestricted pass, but they are utilizing two restricted extra-service runs to get to school. And I'll tell you about that cost later in the presentation. But again, we're looking at over an hour for a student to get across school district boundaries to get to school. So, I like to say customer service is very important, but I like to call it an experience. And I know the experience that many of our stakeholders have had with transportation over the last few years has not been a pleasant one, all right? And it's my goal to make sure that the experience changed, and we're very dedicated to rebranding transportation for the district. So, one of the things that we have is on-screen. You guys learned about on-screen at the Transportation Summit. Just want you guys to know that we are in the final phase of the project implementation. We have all the vendors reporting and the GPS hardware. The system settings have been reviewed and validated. We do have internal and external vendor trainings being scheduled for the next couple of weeks, and then, we're set to go live in March. Other area is school messenger, and I'm a firm believer is not what happens, is how you respond. Transportation is a moving target. There will always be variables that disrupt our service, but it's important that we are communicating. And so, I wanted to give you a snapshot of the amount of robocalls that we're sending out this school year thus far through school messenger. This is when parents are notified if a bus is late, if there's going to be a disruption in service, what have you. We are communicating with our stakeholders. Other piece of it is GPS and ABL, MyStop. It's a great partnership. Tyler Technology has this great app. It's no cost to our stakeholders, our parents and our guardians. They have personalized accounts, secure login, displays the bus stop location, and they get updates on real-time information regarding when that bus is going to be arriving. One of the places that we're looking at piloting is, and we're in the final stages to go live on March 4th, is Spencer. I've met, me and Sarah have met with Nina, the principal over at Spencer. We have validated our system configurations for that school. We have a parental test group in place. We've done marketing with our weekly school newsletters. We're also going to go out to an event, a school event, to promote the application. And then, we're doing transportation training with their team, so they could be knowledgeable of how to inform parents of this great resource. The other piece of it is, we had conversations back in the summit about student tracking, student safety, knowing where the students are. Tyler Technologies has Tyler Drive. It's a combination of two devices. One is a tablet, because I think part of the reason where we see many of our breakdowns with transportation and our service is when we have that sub-driver, the driver that doesn't know the students, the driver that lets off a student that should be, you know, having a parent receive them. These technologies here will help the driver deliver a better service, particularly our sub-driver, but also will increase our student tracking to be able to know when students got on the bus, when students got off the bus, if they got on and off at the right stop. This, in combination with the Tyler Drive with the tablets, will help. We've had reports of, hey, the bus never came. Well, the use of the tablet, if the driver misses a stop, it will automatically reroute them until they go to that stop. So, these are technologies that we're looking to put in place to actually harness a better customer's experience. The other factor is, we're looking at Fletch App, another student tracking solution, and then, School Pass. The ultimate goal is really to develop a universal pass, if possible, that could be also shared with the school. So, if a school ID is a formulation of the idea for the district, then we could use that same school ID as that pass. So, the big thing about customer experience is the management, okay? How can we manage our customer experience? And so, Sarah has been very gracious to help us build out dashboards. And so, my team will have dashboards every day that will highlight our on-time performance, our any delays, disruptions in our service, any robocalls that goes out. We will get a report every day on that information. So, I will see, if a bus is not leaving the bus lot on time, it will automatically let me know what's going on, so then, we can make sure the appropriate communication is going out to our parents and guardians about that delay. Other piece of it is call management. This is a piece that I'm very excited about. I've worked with Jerry Roberts and Cincinnati Bell to bring in a call management system, Avea, and this will help us, again, respond when we do have disruptions in service. I think it's key that we take care of home first. And so, my team right now, all our phone systems have been converted over to this call management system. The highlights of this is, we're going to give all our stakeholders a universal, single-point of contact. It's no longer you have to call for a student, or you got to find a number for Peterman, or you have to find a number for Queen City. When you have an issue with transportation, there will be one number. Within that number, it will be a phone tree setup that will break off and branch out to the various services that you receive. The big piece of this service is, we will be able to whisper in, as they call it, and listen to conversations at high stakes. And so, if need be, myself or Pam Williams, we could intercede into that conversation and address that issue in a more professional or better way, let me just say that. And so, we're going to take that same technology and actually branch that out to our vendors. Our long-term goal is, I think the board, you guys talked about branding our vendors as CPS. This will require a system that, when you're calling about CPS transportation, and even if you get a First Student, or a Peterman, or a Queen City, you're going to be greeted the same way, you're going to have the same level of service, and we're going to be able to appropriately manage that, as well as at the vendor's operation. So, we're going to put the same system in place at the vendors, so if we have an issue, or if we just want to regularly monitor the calls of their call center, we can do so and address that issues on an appropriate level. The other factor of it is, it does have some KPIs, so we can start drilling down some data about our call volumes, length of calls, any dropped calls or missed calls that we're receiving. Later high school start times. I just want to give you guys an update about what we're doing. I've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Adams and her team, Ms. Perry, on this initiative. We do have regularly scheduled meetings set up going forth as we look for ways to collaborate. And so, I kind of want to bring Laura in, Lauren warmly, to talk about the survey that she did on later school start times.
Lauren, Lauren. Good morning, everybody. I really appreciated the opportunity to be here this morning, talk really briefly about the public engagement work that we've done over the past year on this topic. And over the past year, we've talked to over 3,000 students, parents, and engaged community folks on this topic. Over 1,300 people responded to our online thought exchange, working with our friends at Common. We've received input from over 1,500 students and 300 parents, primarily at our Title I schools. We intentionally asked them to go to schools that might have been underrepresented in some of our online surveys. They did those surveys online and in person, at ballgames and parent events, and wherever they could find people. So, they had a real great opportunity to speak to them in that way. We also talked to our LSDMC members. Common did an in-person survey at our November meeting, and we also spoke with folks online as well. Interestingly, about 10 of those folks from West High, five from Withrow, about 64 LSDMC members altogether. And we also have about 49 people who've signed up to receive our semi-regular updates on this topic, as well as the board, and the Student Achievement Committee in particular has addressed this issue. Overall, I would submit to you that the respondents have agreed that the medical evidence about later school start times is conclusive. You won't see in any of the surveys, or any of the in-person conversations we've had, any exception to that. I think the conversation has been around whether it's doable, and primarily, for some folks, there is a concern, I wouldn't call it an overwhelming concern, about extracurriculars jobs, more questions of how it would pragmatically be done. And certainly, we do hear from parents and from students, interestingly, and we particularly heard this in person at the Student Voice Event we did last year, from some kids who have to watch after younger siblings that go to school early. We didn't ask people to take a vote one way or another in these surveys, we asked them to voice their concerns to us. The final thing I just wanted to mention is, we have, given all the topics that CPS has engaged the public on, we've received significant media coverage on this topic. I would say, second only to the FC Stadium conversation last year, Cincinnati Edition did a program on it, 700WOW has done a program on it, all the TV stations and newspaper have covered it multiple times as well. And in fact, some of those even did their own unscientific polls online, where they asked people to write in and give their comments to. I'm happy to answer any questions about the over 3,000 people we've talked to in different forms, and get your input.
Ms. Bates?
Yes, I didn't see the survey, but were there any questions about financial implications, such as would they support, you know, a higher levy, that kind of thing? Because there are trade-offs, as, you know, as we've discussed. Or was this all based on the research and, you know, the impact on life?
Thank you. We did not ask a specific question about would you support a higher levy, or an increased fee, or anything like that, if we were to start school later. We did ask people to give us their thoughts, particularly in the thought exchange, and then, they voted up their individual opinions, kind of like Reddit, if you've used that site at all. So, we asked them to tell us what their concerns were, and there was a contingency of people who mentioned that this was an issue, but they didn't address the costs directly. It was more of an acknowledgement. Most people acknowledged there would be an increased cost in endeavor like this.
Ms. Copeland-Dansky?
Thank you, of course, for your amazing work. I have one concern with the way the survey was pushed out on social media. So, I pulled it up here, and though it's over, and I appreciate the 3,000 folks who've responded in that, I think the way that the survey was pushed out was head-leading information that would make you want to support it. It mentions that studies show that starting the school day later in the morning for high school students can ensure students receive the optimum amount of sleep, reduce auto accidents, and boost overall performance. Well, who wouldn't want that? That sounds great. So, I just, I would urge us to maybe not lead with that. And I don't know how else to do that with your marketing.
We could definitely take that back. Thank you, Board Member Copeland-Dansky. We'll take that back to our polling team too, as well, who crafted those questions.
Other questions before they, so they can proceed?
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so, brings us to our case study. As Superintendent Mitchell mentioned, we did do a case study in working with Metro on what is our options. As you know, with Metro and our high school service, it is on a two-tier model. And in order to provide that service for our district, we need to ensure that we maintain a two-tier model. And so, just to give you an example, if we move start times back for these group of schools, Walnut Hills is one of our largest schools. With that, they are tied to Aiken, Gamble, Hughes, Woodward. This will impact all of those schools. And so, shifting them back to a later start time that has been suggested as 8:30 or beyond also shifts back their time in time at the end of the day. And so, now, you'll have schools ending at 4:00, 4:30 versus the 3:30. An hour of difference plays into, as Lauren had.
Excuse me, we'd like to hear the presentation first, thank you.
All right. So, that was the study with that. Again, we worked with Metro. Metro provided us detailed explanation of why they couldn't support that for that initiative. And really, it boils down to, as you see here, sort of is not able to operate service for the requested changes due to insufficient vehicles and operators. Most of the problems are due to the difference in time changes among the schools. This results in insufficient deadhead time between the schools. So, pretty much, like I said, Walnut Hills is matched up with five other schools. With that being, all those schools will have to shift as one body. If not, they don't have the resources, drivers or operators, to support moving that school without a hiring push or rush. But as you know, the region, we have limited amount of resources, limited amount of vehicles, limited amount of personnel that can operate those vehicles. And this is going to play heavily into our ability to achieve later start times. So, going back to more of our overall operational piece of it, is we have, are in the process of doing an internal audit with Lauren Roberts. We brought in a consultant, Jim Regan, with CAP Works. And yesterday and today, we did an operational assessment with Tyler Technologies. They're actually on site. We're using all these three methods to actually look at our entire operation and make sure that we are providing the services that we are supposed to provide, but also within an efficient manner, and leveraging our resources appropriately. One of the biggest things that we One of the biggest things that we talked about, and I heard concerns from the board on, is our spec costs regarding transportation. We do have a single vendor, UTS, that is currently doing the majority of all of our McKinney-Vento and our spec transportation outside of yellow bus. This creates a disadvantage for us by not having multiple vendors that could provide that service and almost create a competitive market. I've been working with ALC to bring them onboard as a new contract vendor for that service. They have been doing this for over 20 years. They're in 300 districts, small to large, in 19 states. They do have GPS tracking on all their vehicles. They have dedicated support line 24/7 that's catered towards our district. And what you will see, the biggest difference, and I have some more information that I could share with you guys as an appendix after the presentation. But if you look at our cost per student with UTS, it's at a fixed number of $29 per ride, per student. With ALC, we're able to have base price of $65 per trip. You might say, that's more. But that's with up to five students in that van. And so, I could transport five students for $65 versus five students for $150, cost savings, right? And so, we are going to be bringing them on in this year to pilot out and see how well this works for our district, and then look towards next year to reallocating those, that service towards ALC. One of the works that we've done with CAP Works and Ms. Regan is look at a deep dive of our Metro service. As you know, we have two types of passes that we issue out to our students. You have a restricted pass, which access to Metro extra service fixed routes only. Again, those are routes that are dedicated towards our students to get back and forth to school. The average annual cost of that vehicle is roughly $20,000. Then, we also have unrestricted pass. In the case studies that we showed you earlier is showing those students going across the district, they are given out a $315 Metro pass every year. Again, they have access to anything Metro with that pass. If you look at the bar graph, it'll show you, per high school, the allocation of either restricted or unrestricted. Number of buses used is driven by the number of eligible students. That's how we came up with the formula to provide the services, extra services for our high school students. Actual ridership is estimated to be 50% of eligible students. So, right away, if we're looking at our eligible students, we're 50% inefficient because only 50% of the students are actually riding that service. If that makes sense. Student ridership is part of the target of 40 per bus, okay? That's the conservative number that we look at, the number of students allowed on there. So, therefore, services can be operated with fewer buses. Savings potential with that could be upwards of $500,000. Looking at unrestricted pass management, this again is those $315 passes that we issue out. Of that, when we looked at the data, 25% of those passes that we issued out are either being unused or marginally used on a daily basis. And so, if we look at that reduction, we could potentially save another $400,000. Route optimization. So, we said 40 is the baseline for the number of students on a Metro bus. On average, we have 28 students on those buses. In this case, we could operate our restricted service with about 15 to 20% fewer buses, which again, will be a reduction in our overall costs. If you look at, I provide you graphs for each of the high schools that shows the actual average students per bus by high school, and then a potential reduction of vehicles at each of those locations. So, moving forward, next steps to achieving operational success. Current policy review. I think the following policies should be considered for review, given the implications they have on achieving the transportation goals of the district. We have 5120, the enrollment in neighborhood elementary schools, 5113, indoor district open enrollment, 5610, '04, the suspension of bus riding and transportation privileges, and 8600, '02, which is transportation of students. In addition, I'm asking the board to look at redefining the school district boundaries and align existing policies to support a localized, i.e. neighborhood versus cross-district approach to transporting our students. Two, establish a policy that will standardize, that will support the standardization of school bell times in a multi-tier system. In addition, I'm looking for a review of the impact of school of choice and how it has a direct correlation to our efficiencies of transportation. In addition, I'm looking for a review and development on policy that supports the enforcement of Ohio Revised Code, 3327, how we could deem transportation impractical when we're looking at our charter, our non-pub responsibilities. And then, lastly, I'm looking at a development of a district policy that supports the suspension and/or cancellation of any transportation service that is not deemed essential and/or required by law to provide. And so, as you know, we do provide a host of transportation programs throughout the district and initiatives that we are not mandated to provide by law, one of which is high school transportation. But I'm not suggesting that we do away with that, all right? But that just gives you a comparison of what is required by law versus what is not required by law.
Okay.
Any questions?
Well, first of all, let me thank you and Superintendent Mitchell for such a wonderful, thorough, comprehensive look at this transformation issue. Before we open the floor for questions or comments, I want to make sure that the audience kind of understands where we are with this. This initiative is about transformation of our transportation system. Our superintendent, kind of when she first started, outlined some of the areas, the major themes, that we need to address. Later start times is one of those. And because I've been reading it in the paper and hearing it on the news, it's been stated that we are going to make a decision today. I don't think we committed to making a decision today. We do want to have some conversation about it, and we do understand that a decision has to be made very soon. So, I just wanted to make sure that, so that we are meeting people's expectations, not so much about the decision, but at least having a healthy and robust conversation. So, we'll open the floor for questions and comments. Mr. Messer, first.
Yeah, I'd like to make an early assignment, if I could. Superintendent, you could get a non-compete for Mr. Johnson as quickly as possible, so Sorda doesn't come in and try to steal him. I think you could be a real asset to Sorda as they're working through what their next iteration is going to be. But we'll make sure that non-compete is on file immediately. You know, I think this presentation is, you know, as a board member, having completed my first year, and this topic came up kind of the end of last year, I kind of had that hallelujah moment when you kind of did the swoosh at the end on the action items. What's next? This presentation was example of us giving you enough time to get your team onboard and let them do their work, and you delivered excellence here. I think, of course, it's important for the board to give input. We're more on the policy side, so you all are the subject matter experts, and there's nothing more magical than seeing somebody who knows far more about a topic than I ever will kind of lay out what clearly makes sense once you kind of laid it out in the meeting. I'm thinking, oh, I read about that, kind of what the airlines are doing. They're measuring capacity and making their routes more efficient, and that's why you don't have as much choice, but it also doesn't cost as much to fly and all these types of things. So, I just want to say kudos to the entire team. Again, shouting out to Ms. Williams, I believe it is, who kind of carried the ball for you. But as somebody who was getting regular emails about issues last year, I have had zero, I think, at all in the last three months. And I think that's in large part to the administration getting on, rattle the gates as you were getting onboard, and then what you've done so far. So, congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Yes, a couple things. Thank you very much. This was a great presentation. I wanted to kind of throw a couple of things out. And one in particular struck me, and that was the Withrow case study. And one of the recommendations was to look at the inter-district open enrollment policy. What I would suggest we also look at is moving the programming over to the west side of town. Because what I suspect anecdotally, and of course, we'll have to look at the data, is that Withrow has such a strong ESL program and support for children from other countries. What do we have, like 64 different nationalities there? It's incredible that that's what the attraction is. And they're not living in the east side of town. They're living everywhere else. So, that may still give choice, moving the programming, but not, you know, and still providing the services, yet giving some relief on transportation. That's one thought. And there may be other examples, too. Riverview East may be another one. I just don't know what's driving, you know, that kind of attraction to that school from, you know, the, what, 32 neighborhoods? There's a lot. And the other thing I'm thinking is, just to kind of throw out, the yellow buses, that those budgets are under our control. Metro's out of our control, right? And it's not just the Cincinnati Public issue. This is a regional issue. And partnering with Metro, we know that they're going to have a levy. And we know that, you know, that Metro and the city and the business community, quite frankly, are looking at the placement of our levies to see when Metro can be placed. Instead of Cincinnati Public, as we typically do, assuming, you know, the financial burden on our own, that we collaborate with Metro and figure out a time when all of our levies can be realistically supported and get onboard with them. And I think that would make a much stronger case for Metro when we have, you know, children and their welfare involved. That's just, you know, another political thought, to collaborate with other agencies and get what we need for our kids, because that's what's standing in the way of the later start times. It's obvious, you know, especially, well, for half the high schools.
Thank you. Ms. Copeland-Dansky?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for the amazing information. I don't have to repeat what my colleagues have said, but this is a level of excellence that I've literally been searching for, for a long time, having lived through the debacles with transportation with my very own student, and then, of course, hearing from the community about their challenges. Can you explain a little bit more to me, just from my own knowledge, the restricted versus unrestricted pass?
Yes. So, the restricted pass, we contract with Metro to design routes to capture those students, to bring them into that school. And so, those are fixed routes. The cost is per vehicle. That's how we pay for that service. And so, students can only ride those four-digit routes. Standard Metro service is a two-digit number, if you look at all their regular line service. But to quickly identify our services, it's a four-digit number. And so, restricted, they only have access to all those four-digit routes. Those are geared towards supporting our schools and our bell times. Unrestricted, it's just like if you and me want to go get a pass, we get the pass at a discounted rate from Metro, and we have full access to the entire system. Those passes do work, especially for our high school students who are identified underneath a McKinney-Vento because they are so transient. I don't support a full wipeout of those type of passes in that service because it does work for that population of students. But when we're looking at the overall picture, we do need to redefine what we're doing with Metro.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Mr. Datus?
Mr. Johnson?
How you doing, sir?
I guess you answered all my questions I had from last time, and powerfully, powerfully so. And I will promise you that we will address each of your concerns in the Policy Committee. I've got a question about the Walnut Hills case study for later start time. This batch that they're connected to, these other schools, how is that determined? And can the school choice then be reconfigured?
It's a domino effect. As I expressed to the group with later high school start times, it's a domino effect. So, if I move one school, you got to look at deadhead time, where that school is located. How can I efficiently get from School A to School B in amount of time to still service and support our students? So, the big answer, great answer, is yes, we can. But that's an entire redo of our entire system. Because you move one piece, one school, you're going to affect that entire body of work for all of our high schools. And so, that's what we have to be very strategic about doing so because I don't want to impact the student's educational experience. We need to be very strategic about how we go about it.
How was it designed in the first place? Because I'm a disruptor, so I kind of like, I heard you clearly, but I'm not all that confident that it was designed correctly in the first place.
Hallelujah.
So, tearing it all apart doesn't really frighten me as much because I don't have a clue. And I'm not saying that it wasn't, but I need to be more informed on how these things are designed in the first place. And now, then I would need your expert opinion as to is the design, is the system designed the way we need it to be?
Okay. So, to further answer your question, my last meeting with Metro, it's very apparent, we can't operate with Metro and have that false expectations that they could design our routes catered towards our school. That's a legal issue.
Gotcha.
Okay? That's overstepping their boundaries as a public transit entity. Now, what we can do as a district, and what we will be doing going forth, is advising them on, hey, this is our population of students that we have targeted with this school. Can these routes do A, B, or C? Because if you look at how Metro is set up, their route planning department consists of two people.
Wow.
It used to be just one until recently. So, we have to work with them, and quite honestly, yes, it is going to be a partnership to really look at the entire system. But in order to do so, we're going to need time to do so. And we just don't have that time right now to make a grand decision on later high school start times and have it done by March 15th.
Right.
I appreciate you, Mr. Johnson.
I'm glad you mentioned that, and I won't repeat what my colleague said either. But I kept thinking, what are the options? You know, if we do A, B, or C, you know? And some of those options, it's not only with Metro, what options can Metro provide, but what can options do we have in terms of implementing later start times? You know, can we do part of it now, part of it later, you know? Just looking at options. And so, I agree. And I don't think there's a board member here that doesn't recognize and understand the research behind later start times and support that. But the practical pieces of it is, is it doable? And especially, it scares me that it's a decision by March 15th, which doesn't make sense. And to me, that's paramount in this transformation for transportation because until we answer the questions about later start times, all the other stuff, operationally, we can put some things in place, but then we'll end up changing it again. So, that was, that's my tidbit. Mr. Varoski?
Thank you, President Jones. Thank you, Lauren. This is awesome. I won't also repeat everything Board Member Messer said, but I second it. So, kudos to you. I just have a couple of comments and a couple of questions to clarify. So, in addition to what President Jones just said, that I don't believe there's probably anybody up here that disagrees with the science. anybody up here that disagrees with the science or research for later start times. I also don't think there's anybody up here that would disagree with the fact that this would be difficult. Difficult does not mean impossible. Difficult certainly is doable, particularly when we're talking about what's best for kids. And that's, at least speaking for myself, what I feel I was elected to do, was make decisions that are best for kids. And moving these start times is best for kids. I would like to see, I understand that March 15th is relatively insurmountable to come up with new routes. I also, quite frankly, Mr. Johnson, have more faith in you and your department and many of the activists and community members that are not only here today, but out in the community that want to see this happen, to help Metro, to your point, do this. Through no fault of their own, that's not a disparaging comment meant toward Metro at all. As you said, they have two folks, they have a paper system, they're not really even using software yet. So we need to help them do this. So to that end, I would like to see, to President Jones's point, maybe during assignment time, like what is option A, B, and C? What does it look like for one school, or two, or all? What might it look like to do all schools at the same time? Is that possible, impossible? I'm just throwing things out there now. It's obvious to me that under your leadership, we can come up with that, because his presentation gave us all different sorts of options, especially highlighted in the yellow bus piece, which I really liked quite a bit. So I'm interested to see how we can save money there. The questions I have are really just clarifying. One is, and pardon my ignorance, what, as a deadhead, I'm curious what deadhead time is, because I don't think it's the same thing that I think it is.
I think it's music.
Great question. That, that's time that the vehicle is empty, no passengers, until it gets to its next first pickup.
Thank you. I was like, I wish I had deadhead time in high school. I got in trouble for that. Anyway, the last, the last question is, just what are, what are a couple of other examples, just for my own edification, aside from not being mandated to transport high school students, which I know we're not required to? What are some other examples of things, your point number five, which I love and I want to dig in on, that aren't required by law? Just examples that we might do at present? It doesn't need to be exhaustive, just a couple.
Sir, we have many academic programs before and after school that we are supporting transportation of those students to those programs through our metro pass systems. And so, again, some of them have only 10, 15 students in them, some have, you know, hundreds of students in them. Some students, when we look at sports, especially our high school students, they might be on a restricted run, but because of athletics, now we're giving them a 315 athletic pass to catch the bus home. So essentially, we're paying two methods of transportation for those students. There are a lot of those scenarios within our entire operation.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate the report. I think it's very thorough and, and goes to a number of the issues that have been raised for a number of years. Appreciate it. To our point, our role is to provide the right policy, but also to provide the resources. So over on that left side of that one screen, that falls to us, because you can't do anything unless we give you the okay, and it's within policy, and we give you the, the resources that you need. Several things I'd like to mention, there's one where the, let's face it, we have two systems, we have the yellow bus and we have the metro. I just want it to be said that I don't, well, yeah, five vendors or whatever, but here's the yellow bus for the little people, and here's Metro for the, the tall kids, okay? My point is, I reject completely Metro's position on this, largely because that's been their position for over a year, and not helped us work through what we can do. Because I can't have Metro tell me we cannot do it, and then it stops. I think to Mr. Morosky's point, I trust you all and, and some of the experts that the community has produced to rethink a number of these things. So I, I don't want to end it with Metro saying, because they said that on March 15th last year, basically creating a number that was outrageous so that we would stop thinking. No. You cannot have a vendor that you need a partnership with make those kinds of determinations. So I, I do, I do really trust us to be able to, to figure that out, working in partnership. On Metro, I also appreciate what the superintendent began the report with, which was, those were the priorities. And that's what I'm living by right now, is the list that you just gave us. Couple of things. I still wonder, and I know Ms. Copeland-Dansby and I talked about this in one of the public meetings, I still maintain that I wish the customer service piece, regardless of the vendor, would reside with us. Because we can talk about rebranding, but every, nobody cares that it's first student. Every time they see, or they're thinking it's CPS, whether it's Queen City, whatever, it is already our brand, and it's the worst brand that we have in the district. So I think the customer service being in one place with our folks, and you've had all this technology, I'd rather it be that, but, I mean, you're the expert, but I'd rather it be that for the branding purpose, to be, reside with us. Also, don't we already have a multi-tiered system of starts and endings? I mean, there's like, in the yellow bus, there's like five different times these, our schools start, and high school, there's like six different times that they start. So what did you mean by multi-tiered versus what we already have?
That's correct. And so if you look at all our elementary schools, a large percentage of them are first-tier schools, and we have a smaller percentage that are second-tier schools. So we have probably roughly, this, don't quote me on this number, I would say about 40, 45% of those first-tier schools can't be matched up with a second-tier school. And so we need to balance it out. Where we do have a true tier system, that we're not looking at every 15 minutes, we have a different start time with a school location. That doesn't work for transportation.
Thank you. And invariably, those early starts, as you look at the charter schools, and you look at the parochial high schools, if you're not even talking about yellow bus, but talking about Metro, all those are there. I mean, it's, we seem to have a disproportionate number of earlier schools than do the charters and the parochials. And I'm not sure, I don't want, I want to service everybody, but it seems that we, they start with us, and that's part of the tail wagging the dog on that one. Real quickly, you've really made a good case for going back to a meridian system. Social studies teacher, it's not a hemisphere, like some of you talk about, it's a meridian. It's east and west, it is not north and south. So there you go. But a meridian where indeed you have the east side of, now, I would throw in there, too, that we really have three sections to the district. You've got an east and a west, and they're very far apart in many ways, but you also have the central corridor where Ms. Jones and I are in that College Hill area. But interestingly enough, too, that's where you see the high schools that have particular programming, in that middle corridor particularly. You made the case for Wi-Fi in our buses. If our children are on the buses for an hour and a half, they need to at least be able to do something. Three hours, not some of them, okay? That adds to the problem. Schools of choice, the bigger issue is that we have to redesign the district. And that came out in the very first transportation report we made, that we cannot sustain the transportation line item in part because of the choice. And we have to be careful how we do that, because we build ourselves on choice. But there's plenty of good things we can do. And the neighborhood boundary piece, I know a couple of us are, three or four of us are very into that. Also, how shall I say it? The financial trade-offs, I don't know what those would be from a standpoint of if, what the benefits, that's what we have to measure. No, I'm very pleased with the report and would like, though, to make a couple of requests, if I could, one or two requests. We get, in this summit, and maybe this is an assignment, I'm going to do it now, if it's okay with you, just because I'll forget, but there were two documents that we got in the wonderful summit, and one of them was a transport data request 102318, which was really a budget. And I'd like to see the updated numbers on that, and, because really, on that one, it shows that we are spending as much money transporting special ed kids as the rest of the CPS students combined. So, so I would like to see that. And then this one, this, this one was, this had a little handwriting called Metro, and it had a list of the charters, I guess for the high schools. And I would just like to know if this list is still current. And when you look at some of these, there are very, very few people in some of these places, and are we really using Metro, or have we found other ways to transport it? But I'd like to see an updated list of this, it would help us. And then when we get to assignments, I am going to ask, as Mr. Morosky kind of did, that maybe we join forces with some of the community people and our experts, and to my disruptor friend, look at this thing a little bit better from a standpoint of what we can do, especially the metro piece. Is that fair? So thank you.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Sir, I would like to say that our work with Metro did not stop without email correspondence. We are still actively working with them. I'm very committed to forming a partnership, not only with Metro, but all our vendors, to tackle these, these very key items for our district. And so rest assured, we're still actively working and engaging. And as I said earlier, I have regularly scheduled meetings set up on my calendar with the later high school start committee. I invited them to actually have a meeting with myself, Metro, so we could all talk about what is the long-term plan with, with, with what we want to achieve as a district and everything. And so we are actively engaged with that. I also want the board to understand that transportation is a big component of this, but in our transportation matrix meeting, you know, a, a piece of it that we're not looking at is our contractual language of our administrators and our teacher personnels inside those, those high school locations. That will dictate heavily what we decide to do as well. And so all this has to be collaborative. I can't stress that enough. It can't be just one single, you know, transportation makes this, you know, partnership. It's multifaceted approach, so.
Okay. Ms. Bates, Mr. Messer, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, Metro is regional. What other districts are doing the kinds of things we are with Metro for their high school students, if any? And if we are able to forge these kinds of agreements and collaborations with them, is that going to impact other districts or cause them to think that, you know, perhaps this would be a good option for them as well?
Want me to respond?
Yes.
Okay. It's not uncommon for, say, for instance, Columbus, they utilize Cota to transport their students. Toledo Public Schools, where I worked at before, we utilize Tarda to transport our high school students. The difference between all three of us is our needs for our students and our geographical boundaries that we have to work within. And so that's where, it's no one-size-fits-all solution to Metro services for our high school students. We really need to look at what is the true needs of our students in order to make sure they get to and from school in a safe, efficient manner.
Yeah, as a follow-up, that's not, that wasn't my question. You'll have to kind of get used to me. I, I don't deal with the other urbans, we don't compete with them. We, we, if we must say compete, we compete with the Southwest Ohio districts, and we should collaborate with them more closely, actually, because we have more in common with them. My question was with regard to the Oak Hills, the Reddings, the Norwoods, all the other districts in our area that also have access to Metro. Which of those are using Metro for transportation? And if they're not using them now, and they see our model being successfully impacted, implemented, would, there's a possibility that they may jump on as well, and that would impact Metro further? That's my question. So first, do you have, do you know what other districts in the metro regional area are using Metro in a similar way to us? And again, you know, if it's successful for us, there's a possibility that this could expand.
That is something that I will have to go back and, and work with my fellow constituents at those districts to find out what they're doing. In my time here, I have not reached out to them. I do have a conference planned with OAPT where we will have our regional meetings, and so that will be something that I could discuss with that group there at that time and report it back to you.
Okay. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I just wanted to applaud you for your approach to build that partnership with Sorda. I frankly don't think they're trying to screw us, and I don't think it's prudent for us to do anything but have you as our point personnel in place, build that relationship with them, and, and work together. Because I do know, they are well aware, based on some of the board members that I know, that we are one of their largest customers, and there has to be more of an engagement. Another hat that I wear from a prior life, being very involved in public transportation as an issue, with the streetcar being part of that, with transportation being a big part of the community where I served as president, the majority of our residents did not have cars. I've been asked to participate in some conversations from that standpoint at the Chamber of Commerce, which I updated you on, on this more broad regional transportation plan. As I mentioned to you, they're very interested in having you kind of be a contributor to the overall strategy and planning regionally. And I think what's called out here is an excellent opportunity, not that you need any more work, but maybe it's done through the chamber, since they have quite a bit more resources dedicated to this particular issue, to convene an educational work group in transportation in some way that may or may not include universities, et cetera. So I think that, that could be an important part. And, you know, I think to all the people who are advocates of the later start time, again, I will reiterate board, I'm sorry, President Jones's comments, that we absolutely get the data. And, you know, as a parent, I am absolutely not looking forward to getting up with high schoolers at that point, especially being a late bloomer, how old I'll be when that happens? But I think it's the financial implications, and I think that the budget amount, am I right, 45 million is our-ish budget line, and five years ago, wasn't it 35? So we're growing at a clip that's, that's way faster than the growth of our students. And for us to have Metro potentially be the partner they could, we need that levy to be successful. Because it's not that Metro doesn't want those buses, I think there's lots of people at Metro want those, the dollars are very tight at this point. And, you know, what I'm excited about is the Better Bus Coalition has now joined forces with the Chamber and Sorda on a plan that seems to make sense, and hopefully, we'll be at the table shaping those plans with you there, but then rallying all of us, because the success of that allows so many of these things to happen in a much easier fashion.
Yes. We have one or two more comments, and then we're going to close out this conversation. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to say I'm not that thrilled about the word partner, as much as I'd like to have Metro think of us as a client that needs to be served. From a standpoint of partnership, I think they are going to rely upon us to do anything new or reform-minded, because they don't have the capacity yet to do it. One hopes eventually they will. But we know that in the past, they've had to use our software. In the past, they've really been very dependent upon what our team is saying. And if our team is there being advocates for our children and seeing, and we see ourselves as clients of Metro, and I think their biggest customer, from all things I've understood, I think that that's going to be a better relationship. But when we get to assignments, I do want to assign a working kind of group to try to see what we can do to expedite some change. Thank you.
Okay, so as we close out the conversation, I just wanted to get, ask Board Member Bolton to clarify a statement, and then we'll close out with trying to think what our next steps are. So when we talked about working with Metro to develop and advise around options, Board Member Bolton, you suggested that we rethink our position with Metro. And if you could finish that statement, rethink our position as an option to what?
We need Metro, and Metro needs us, so there is a working relationship, and there has been. There are legal parameters within- There are legal parameters within which they have to work, or we're in deep trouble farther down the road. Got that. But I would really like to be able to think that they can embrace the idea that we may want to change and reinvent what we're doing in an effort to meet the needs, not only of our students, but also the students in the parochials and the privates. So, I think, and the charters. I just think that there's a, just, we need a shift of relationship. It's one of the reasons we're still a year away from when we first asked them something about this, is because they haven't been able to shift the relationship.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So, as we close out, there's a lot of good stuff, a lot of next steps that you've given us some direction as a board. We appreciate that. I think that, I would suggest that we keep this at the forefront of our agenda discussion. And so, March, February 25th, that's Monday, so the next board meeting after that is March 6th, if we can ask for an update. And maybe included in that update, if we could flesh out, number one, the assignments that you would get, and also, by that time, hopefully, maybe you've had a chance to sit and talk with Metro about the client, business partner relationship. And then, the board has some work to do as well in looking at some of these things. I think the board is, that everybody is in agreement that we probably will not have a decision about late start times on March 15th. That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it depends upon the success of the assignment.
Right. So, yeah, so, but it is an ongoing, but we know we have to make a decision, so we have to keep that in mind. So, this is really, really got to be very proactive, and we have to push it. So, Mr. Morosky, final comment.
No, I was just going to say, clarifying, I'm not in agreement that we won't have a decision by March 15th, just that it would be difficult to have a decision by March 15th.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. Okay. Thank you again so much, and thank you, because I know you led this, but I know you had the other people on the leadership team who contributed to this, and we thank everybody for their work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I also want to thank, I think it's appropriate to thank members of our audience who keep this in front of us. I remember going through this with FC, and we always had lots of people in the audience. And we do appreciate what you are sharing with us and the, to maintain the emphasis on this, and also the energy that you give it, it keeps us going. And we'll keep pushing forward to try to make the best decision possible. So, thank you for that. Okay. So, our board matters, subject matter, is the West Side Campus follow-up. Superintendent, do you have an update on that?
I do, as soon as I can find the right paperwork. Okay. So, I had three follow-up assignments as a result of our last conversation and the presentation. One assignment was to get an estimated cost for renovations of Gamble, and you should have that at your seat. It is a large document that I folded in half and then folded again. So, this gives you, is a large document. That gives you an estimate for a renovation of Gamble, if you're looking at a renovation and cosmetic improvements for an elementary school. And then, use, and then the other side gives a renovation for a K-12 with a gym addition. So, that was one of the follow-up assignments that I was given. The second one was to follow up in terms of considering, which we thought was a wonderful idea, since Carson is under its capacity with its modified, with the modifications to the facility, to consider or explore moving some preschool units or opening some preschool units at Carson. And so, I've had a conversation with Vera Brooks, and she is looking into that, and will work with Susan Bunty, who is the assistant chief over Carson. And then, the third thing that I was asked to follow up on is what might, what are some options, what is an option to fulfill a Montessori need on the west side of town? And so, in terms of that, our thought was really centered around the possibility of Gamble becoming a K-12, which would then open some additional elementary seats. And so, that's why you see the renovation of Gamble in a two parts, one being a K-12 with a gym addition. So, those are the three items that I was asked to follow up on from our last presentation and meeting.
Okay. Do board members have questions?
I will say that there are just a couple of the really quick things. Regardless of what happens with Mercy, we are obviously still going to move forward with LEAP to continue to grow that building and to quite honestly try to recruit more students from Roberts to alleviate the overcrowdedness at Roberts. The other thing that we could still consider doing is moving the four preschool units that are at Westwood. There are two inside the building and two behind. If we move the two that are inside the building over to Mercy, then that would make some more space in that school. And then, the third thing that we really could do without any change or deciding what happens to Mercy, is the consideration to move the seventh and eighth grade student who are at Roberts to high school, but I wouldn't advise to do that until the year 2020, '21, because those kids miss the opportunity to select a high school at this point. Plus, I think there's a transition piece that we need to really work on. So, those are three things that could happen regardless of what happens at Mercy.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Appreciate the updates on all of those. I am fascinated by the idea of a K-12 Montessori anywhere. I think that's interesting. The other piece of it, you did mention, and I had the opportunity to talk to some folks about this, you did mention, as you just referred again, to the, some of the Roberts kids for seventh and eighth grade. And there was, there was great concern among the couple of people that said, oh, the kids are so well-served here. But then, based upon what Ms. Bates has mentioned and the Withrow piece, you did mention those kids going to high school, and knowing that West High is, at least on these numbers, seem to be under-enrolled significantly. A couple, two people, it was two people, there were three people that were really concerned about, two people said, it would be really interesting to think in terms of it being an international seventh and eighth grade academy, so to speak, located at West High, so that it wasn't just matriculation into West High, but taking advantage of the fact that we have a number of people whose English language is not there first, and that you do have that international capacity. And that, I don't know enough about the building, although my brother graduated from there and I visit it often, but if there's a way to make a kind of a separate sort of thing, even if it were to somehow be an initial IB kind of school, which we don't have, which, you know, used to be, at least in a shallow, narrow form at Withrow, the whole language piece is a problem for us, because there's not a lot of follow-up after kids do take some of it in the early grades. So, just to be thinking about that might be at least something that a couple of community members said that could be a real benefit. And to your point, it wouldn't start right away, but it's something to think about.
Just in a spirit of transparency, quite honestly, we looked at the numbers of kids who are enrolled in high schools that are near Roberts, but we also looked at another high school that has the capacity to take in 150 students, and that is Aiken, and that there is a growing population of ELL students there. So, just in a spirit of transparency.
Well, as you know, College Hill is the center of the universe. So, that's a great idea.
So, they have approximately 837 students, if I remember correctly, and their building is built for 1,000, and so, they have the capacity to take on 150 students.
And not to walk down memory lane too fast there, but too slowly, but we will recall that in the very beginning of the FMP, when Aiken was maybe not going to happen, and then it started to happen, we will remember that people of little faith in the community said, we only want it to be a 500-seater. And we said, no. Thinking Spig has proven to be the way to go in this district.
Okay, I just want to, before we acknowledge, I just want to comment, because I want to be clear in my head what direction we're going with this. Sounds like, I think we're pretty clear that there are some options for how we build capacity in the west side, and you've given us that information in a follow-up today, which satisfies us. So, it may be an incremental process, is what I'm hearing. Then, with the added piece that was just proposed today, we want to make sure that gets on the radar as well. The renovations at Gamble is clarified, this is not, this is if, if the options are, or explain the option, is this, if, this is if Gamble remains as a K through 12?
So...
Pre-K through 12, thank you.
Yeah, so, to be really clear, two things. So, one thing is, we believe that regardless of what goes in Gamble, there needs to be some renovations at Gamble.
Okay. At this cost.
And it may necessarily be at this cost. It just depends on what goes in there. If it's an elementary school, then you have one cost, and then you can see if it's a K-12. But regardless of what happens at Mercy, we believe that we do need to do some things at Gamble School.
Okay, gotcha. Mr. Messer, and then Mr. Morosky.
Yeah, you know, and that, at least, I was one of the people asking to kind of get that, because I think we all assume that Gamble staying as Gamble is, is not an option from just the physical building itself. Now, what appears to me is it's about a $9 million delta plus to go from an elementary, or to keep it as a high school, I should say, 9 million extra to keep that building as a high school. Knowing the needs that we have in so many other places, at least for one person here, it sure is helping me along with what potentially is the right solution, that we utilize that building for the 1.8 amount, which does so much that I know Board Member Bates has talked about the needs for that demographic, and hoping that we leverage this whole opportunity with the Westwood campus to meet some of those needs, and that we then move that high school, because this almost $12 million, I guess I should say it's a delta of almost $10 million, I would just really struggle with where that might come from, given our restrictions from a budget standpoint.
Where are you going to respond?
I was just going to say, the treasurer whispered in my ear to remind me that this is not in anyone's budget right this moment, the 1.8. And so, these would be additional costs that we would have to include within our budget, which is all the more reason we are very committed and focused on high-impact, low-cost.
Okay. Follow-up?
Yeah, so, that being, you know, I think that's such an important piece, because this is, you know, even keeping that just as an elementary, it's almost $2 million. I think it'd be interesting to see your thoughts on, you know, when decision time comes. Even though that's a lower-cost option, you know, where those dollars potentially can come from, with people sharpening their pencils probably across the district. And further reinforcing probably how we need to begin engaging taxpayers far and wide across this district, parents, everybody, to begin the process to communicate, it is wonderful that CPS is growing. It is wonderful that our schools are doing so well, but to have the reimbursement that we are from the state is not equal, as we know. And we're going to need, we're going to need those capital dollars in the immediate future, and this could be a great case study for them to, even to renovate this one building to meet this growing need. And then, with the strategic plan coming, I think maybe we should think kind of as a board, et cetera, of how we can support your efforts to a greater degree, engaging the public behind that. Thank you.
Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Jones. My question, it's just clarifying, and I know it's already been asked. The one on the left would be if Gamble moves into the Mercy site, and then the cosmetic improvements to turn that building into a new elementary.
That wasn't the context in which we did the work. It was just, if Gamble is an elementary building, how much would it cost to renovate?
Got it, okay. And then, the one on the right is if Gamble stays in that building and it's made a K through 12 in its current building with a gym addition.
If the current Gamble becomes a K-12 school.
In its current location.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so, and to echo Mr. Messer, that everybody knows that I'm in favor of a Gamble move, and this just sort of reinforces it to me as, again, with this high-impact, low-cost piece. And then, another cost, of course, would be hiring a new staff for a new school, which we would need if we had a new elementary school by the fall anyway. I just wanted to make sure that I was seeing that correctly.
So, last week, when we had this initial conversation and the presentation, at the end of the presentation, I did ask the question, so I just want to get more clarification. If Gamble is to move into the Mercy building, is the expectation that we open two schools in August, which would be the Mercy site and also the Gamble building?
Okay. Ms. Bates, Mr. Messer?
Yeah, that would be a challenge. Yeah, and, but we have, and I'll reiterate what I said at the last meeting, right now, first round of lottery, after acceptances, we have close to 400 children who, whose families have applied for Gator. And we're now in the second round of lottery, so I can assume we're only going to have more. So, certainly, this board member's priority would be for the families that want to be in our district now, right now. So, whether one is delayed, we have, we have a need. And we can't say, you know, we're against charters and vouchers if we can't support the children who want to go to our own schools. So, that's this board member's view on the situation, whether or not we can have two buildings ready, you know, but we, this is, this has, this has to be the decision by March 15th. This is the important one, and I strongly believe we need to accommodate the people who have come to us already.
This has to be a decision by February 25th. That's what we committed to.
Oh, whenever.
Because it takes...
Yes.
Yeah, so, it is immediate. I think that's what you're saying. Okay. Mr. Messer and Ms. Bolton?
So, you know, my opinion is that the Westwood campus has to be the first priority. And then, you know, you know, I think my hit is that Gamble should move over, and we create that space for additional Montessori seats at the Gamble site. I think if we can kind of get some consensus that maybe people are there, and the administration says, we think that's a sound decision, and that we all can wrap our hands around it, then it's really putting together a project plan. Because right now, people could say, we want you to do this. There's a whole project plan that would have to be created to make that happen. And I know, at least from my work experience, you speed up a timeline, you also increase costs. So, it could be this, if it was planned out, but if you're getting people to move up projects and do things, it could be more costier. You may not have the staff, because everybody's deployed on fixing this other building, so what would it cost for consultants or partners to come in and help with that? And then, then the other, so if that says, based on this, we think this is not feasible, here's what we think an interim plan is. I know that trailers have been used at schools for a short period, and, you know, could be communicated that, hey, for the first two months, this will be the plan, or, hey, there's going to be space at a... Or, "Hey, there's going to be space at a, at one of the, at the Mercy campus where we could house the students temporarily for a couple of months because we may not be able to live into the full capacity there. So the first quarter will be there and then we'll transition back over." So maybe it's just a, a situation where some of those scenarios could be laid out, again, without kind of some of the specifics on what it would take, timing, resources, and the various options. I think we'll have to rely on your expertise to kind of present those with your team.
Ms. Bolton, did you have a comment?
Very quickly, I, I will repeat what I said before. I'm going to support whatever the Superintendent would recommend from a program standpoint. We've created about five high schools since about 2001. And I'm not sure what board action was required to do any of that, very frankly. But my two things, three things I have said besides, we'll support the Superintendent, I will do what she recommends. One is to address the need of the Montessori families on the West Side. Because we're not yet addressing if we have those wait lists. That's, there has to be a West Side package, which I think you're working through and I appreciate that. And the other piece is, we have to find a way to keep the West Side families on the West Side for high school. Because currently, they're not staying there. They're either going to parochial high schools or they're trying to go to the East. And they are not necessarily going to the two existing high schools. So the long view is choice, frankly. Because it's even a transportation problem if we think of Meridian's east-west. I just want you to be thinking about this long view on all of it. Because, and Gamble, I'm, I'm excited about the fact that, that the Gamble people regardless are going to get a better building.
Yes, and, and I, I want to make this comment. I agree with Board Member Bolton that we really should be driven by what administration tells us is going to work best for the district. And I have said all along through this process, some of us, everybody who's involved is going to get something they want and they're going to get something they don't want. Board members are the same way. And so we're going to get seven different opinions about what it looks like. But my question is, given all the information that we've given you and direction, what's needed in terms of the district, what works from your perspective? What works and what's doable?
So I believe that I laid out pretty, I believe I presented.
Yeah.
I was going to say laid out pretty clearly. I presented the option that I think is what the team and I came up with that we believe would best suit the, the district. And that is that Gamble site become a pre-K through 12. I will have to admittedly say that was before I saw the figure in terms of the cost to renovate and that we put a new program at Mercy. I understand the fact that we do need to create more Montessori choices and opportunities on the West Side of town. And so, again, I do understand in terms of, we want high impact with as low a cost as possible and efficiencies. But my original recommendation was for a new program to go into the Mercy site. And that Gamble would stay in its current building with some renovations.
And, and so my follow-up question to that is the renovations that would need to occur for Gamble lies here.
It does. And to be honest with you, we have not factored in, quite honestly, what it would take or if we have the physical capacity to do any renovations by August. Because right now, our people are at two places, no, they're at three places. They're at Stargill, they're at Cairns, and they're at Mercy.
So legitimately, if, if we should decide on what you just proposed, it could take us a couple of years to get there. Is that what you're saying?
It could. But I also do understand the immediate need that we have for families who want-
Right.
And want CPS as an option.
Okay.
To be honest with you, I, I see both sides. I understand from a cost perspective, I was looking at from an innovation, new high school, new innovative offering for the West Side of town.
Okay.
But unfortunately, I think I almost made my case the other way when I presented this information on the cost.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Messer.
Yeah, and, and I just want to reiterate, of course, I want to respect the responsibilities of the Superintendent versus the responsibilities of the Board. I think my comments are very specific just to the financial viability of, we're going to have to make renovations either way. Now, the question is, do we make $2 million renovations or do we make 10, 10 additional more million-dollar renovations? And knowing, you know, just the, the $10 million we got upfront for Stargill, that, that pack, we planned to invest it and we had to eat into that already for some of the improvements for Mercy site. So, you know, we can't even say, "Well, we'll, we'll use that piece." So I just think that the, the financial part of the equation to me is probably an important piece. And so what I didn't hear you say is now, after considering the additional costs, here is my final, final recommendation. And I think that may require you to have some additional discussions with your team, et cetera.
Okay. Other questions or comments? So given what we know today, I'm going to ask Superintendent, because we did commit to make a decision by Monday, is there anything specifically that you need from us? That's my first question. And then my second question is going to be to Board members, and that is, do we have enough information to make a decision? So my first question, is there anything in particular that you need from the Board to help?
Not that I can think of this moment, but if I could have until tomorrow morning, that might be helpful for me to think.
Thank you.
I'm a reflective thinker, so.
One, once, and this might be an assignment. I'll just wait to assignments.
Okay.
It might help the Board, I think, move on a decision in terms of, so that we're clear what's being proposed, I think. And then my question to the Board, to the Board members is, do we feel like we have enough to make an informed decision? Because it will be on the agenda next week. Right? Hold on now, because I see that light in Melanie's eyes. Ms. Bolton.
Need, I, I don't think I need any more information, but I do need a formal recommendation from the Superintendent with justification that justifies the, her recommendation and also fills out that West Side package. I think that would be helpful, but, you know, we can't-
That was actually going to be the assignment. Not in those such eloquent words, but yes. Okay.
Meridian.
All right. Ms. Bates, did you have a comment?
Yes, and this kind of encompasses probably a couple of these presentations. But we've had kind of offline discussions about someone in the administration, offline, I mean, between an administrator and a Board member, not offline with the Board, I'll make that clear, about having someone in charge of asset management. And that also is a way to raise money for these capital needs that hasn't been discussed in the budget or with this. So I just wanted to put that out there that, and, and I'm the Board member who made that suggestion to an administrator. But I want to put that out there that that's always a possibility because, you know, let's face it, we have, what, over a billion dollars worth of assets and some of them are very desirable. So, yep, there, there's, there's some ways to explore paying for this that needs to be explored further by the administration, just so the Board knows.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll make a formal assignment when we get to that area about the recommendation. Any, anything else regarding West Side? Brief comments, Mr. Messer.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, did I miss you?
Yes.
Sorry. And then Mr. Messer.
This new program proposal, I would need to know what that means. Of course, I was with Mr. Morowski, ardent supporter of moving Gamble. But I am more a supporter of the Superintendent and the staff's recommendations. But I would definitely like to know what this new program would look like so that it, so that I could understand the impact it will have to Western Hills High School. And I'm, I'm really concerned that Western Hills High School gets underplayed in the entire discussion about the West, West Side package. And I want to make sure that we're not, you know, creating a, a place where it's last resort, all the kids on West Side that don't want to go to the new school, don't want to go Montessori, they, you just ship them over to West High. And I think we have to have a plan for that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mr. Messer, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry. Mr. Messer, Mr. Morowski.
Yeah, unfortunately, I will be at our annual leadership conference next week. So of course, this vote would fall on my annual week away. But, you know, I think the, the, for me, the, the two things that would have to be solved in any direction that we go is kind of the, the timeline for making whatever change happen and then the resource plan that supports that. And to me, once you lay out the options that I believe that the team that you have surrounding you has worked on and says, "This is the right fit for our district," I think probably a lot of us can get around that table with kind of that clear, here's kind of the timeline, here's the resources, and then going back, you know, as it's been stated, as I said several meetings back, what is our overall plan for the West Side? And Ozzy took my specific comment there because I do think West High is another asset that we could leverage to a greater degree to complete that, that full puzzle. Also thinking about some of the deserts, educational deserts in the Price Hill area that could be kind of included in that too.
Mr. Morowski.
Thanks, President Jones. I was just going to respond to your question about anything. I would need to make the decision and it's just going to kind of be seconding, Mr. Davis, excuse me. And my main question is, the Cincinnati UDL Innovation Academy is certainly exciting prospect for a whole host of reasons. And my pointed question would be if the campus would be career tech only or if career tech would be an aspect of it. Because again, to Mr. Davis's point and Mr. Messer, West High has some neat career tech options, as does Dater, of course. And would we be giving the quote-unquote innovative jobs of tomorrow tech to a new school and we could give it to West High? That, that would be the only thing I needed. Thank you.
Okay. So we will address, kind of bring it all together under assignments. So why don't we move on to the Superintendent's report?
February is Black History Month. And so you have here a picture of some doors that have been decorated at one of our local schools, Ethel Taylor, bringing to life the history for our students. So I wanted to highlight that. In addition to the fact that Sarah Trimble Oliver, kudos to her, where's Sarah? Oh, okay. And our grant writer, were able to land a Verizon Foundation grant, which is very cool. This allows take-home devices for students who are in K-8, along with the Wi-Fi to go along with them, embedded, so that is very exciting. So Roberts Academy and Sailor Park are the recipients of those grants and the dollars and the technologies. We're very excited about that. Those two schools are among 50 that are joining the Verizon Innovation Learning in this area, but out of 150 across the nation. So we're super excited about that. In addition, we have some kids who are learning martial arts through ABC. The Taekwondo championship is highlighted right here, where we have 20 students who are participating in this program. And they had to travel to Westerfield or Westfield, Indiana to compete in a Midwest Taekwondo championship, which is very exciting. Our young people are learning the technical aspects as well as the personal development aspects of martial arts training. So that is very exciting. We had eight students who increased their rank from a white belt up to a, as high as green belt. So very exciting for our students. And then the, no, the, we want to celebrate our crossing guards. So this is a part of our campaign that the Chief of Police and I are launching around safety as it relates to safe driving, but also safety as it relates to pedestrian safety. And so we are celebrating our crossing guards and the amazing work that they do every day on behalf of our kids. In addition to, I don't have a slide for this particular item, but we wanted to acknowledge ACT Day. So our juniors are knee-deep in the ACT. So thoughts and prayers out to them. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the Superintendent?
So moved.
Second, okay. Discussion. Mr. Davis.
Mr. Superintendent, you raised a, a question for me. What happens if a student is on removal during ACT? Do they then get to read? So there's a makeup day. Thank you, Ms. Deputy Superintendent.
She's got the answers.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? We have a, a motion and on the table. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski? Mr. President Jones, sorry.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the Treasurer?
So moved.
Excuse me, I, I'm sorry. Treasurer Wagner, you, you wanted to comment on the report before we put it on the table.
Yes, thank you, President Jones. I received a text earlier during the transportation presentation, there's a mistake on page three. Item number, numeral two, number A, which is the Freckle Education Contract, is really not ITM, but it's Carson Elementary. And the funding source is Title I School Improvement Stimulus A. So I apologize for the error, but caught it. Apologize to the CIO for that mistake.
So, repeat the revision again, I'm sorry.
Okay, so under Roman numeral two on page three, where it says "For Board Information," the first one under there, it says "ITM for Freckle Education." That's really Carson, so if you'll just manually write Carson. And the funding source is not the general fund, but Title I School Improvement.
Okay. Did we get that? So do I have a motion to approve the revised report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski? President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, we have a couple of inquiries and updates. Please scratch number one, that was a mistake on my part. So that, that update will be provided on, at our next Board meeting. So we have one scheduled and then Ms. Bates has one. So Mr. Messer, and we want to do this quickly because we do have an executive session meeting after this. We'll be here all day. Okay, Mr. Messer, you want to give us an update on the Business Advisory Council?
Yeah, I just wanted to update the Board. This past week, I participated in the Business Advisory Council meeting. And it was my first with this council, kind of in their new iteration. And I think as we all know, the state of Ohio now has in the statute that this Business Advisory Council can be an official body that supports the school district. And I will forward the statute to the Board following today's meeting. I think my takeaways from that and, you know, my active conversation during that meeting was that we needed to align on what that actually means, what that charter is for that group so that they understand, Bates, what's- what that charter is for that group, so that they understand what's on the charter and how they fit, and then, how that relates to what we anticipate being how they fit. So, we have full alignment there. I think part two is then, as they move from being kind of a volunteer organization that says, we're gonna help you do job interviewing, we're gonna help you do mentoring and those type programs, to now being a more formalized advisory council, my question was, in addition to the people that were there, who else should be at the table? Because if we are truly looking for support for our district in working towards one of the superintendent and the administration's party, which is employment, they are best connected to those industries that we would want to focus on. Of course, there was somebody there from the chamber who kind of spoke at a high level about their new jobs outlook and what they see for the next five, 10, and beyond years. We had some discussion about who else should be on that council that are in those specific job categories. So, in follow-up, I did have a meeting yesterday with the chair just to kind of align on next steps. Because he did feel that some of the members were still in the old like, hey, we just want to tap in and use this as a way to get some of your people, versus how it's laid out in the statute. And then, as it relates to how we engage then directly with the district, I think we aligned it probably in education to that group of how the district works and where their kind of advice would be needed and how it would be most effective when considering the role of the board, the role of the administration, and then, how the statute's written. So, you know, the next steps are to align on that charter with that group and then, have a discussion on really who should be in those meetings going forward. And so, we'll have more of an update once we have that charter to get this board aligned to say, yeah, we agree with that interpretation that that council has taken. And it meets with what needs to be done for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Ms. Bates?
Yes, I wanted to bring up an issue that we could discuss possibly in our finance committee meeting. So, the board is aware that this could be an issue. Kind of a proactive issue, actually. And that I would like to bring up the possibility of engaging our current governmental relations consultants, Eric Kearney in particular, and possibly George Glover, their work. And include that in, include their work or have local government included in their work. And in particular, education and engagement around CRA agreements. I mean, it's been obvious that the city and the city officials are operating on a very different level of understanding of CRAs and their impact on the district as we are. And before we, the board authorizes negotiations, I feel strongly that these officials need to understand the impact of CRAs on Cincinnati Public Schools. Now, this is, we have a negotiating team that the superintendent named. This is no way negotiation. This is education and engagement that I am proposing for our, for our public officials and city administrators. And I would, I wanted to bring this up to the board because I would like to discuss this further in finance when our governmental relations people, consultants, are there with us with their report.
Okay. We look forward to a recommendation then on finance.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other inquiries and updates? Mr. Morowski?
I have one inquiry, President Jones. And if it can't be answered now, that's totally fine. We can talk about it Monday or memo later on. I heard from a number of concerned parents and actually students, grade school students, about random searches in a specific school. I was, I was just curious. My inquiry is if that's common practice, if we do random searches. I wasn't aware that we did. So, it looks like we do. Okay. Okay.
Done random searches for years, back when I was a principal, 15, 16, 17 years ago and beyond then. We do, just to ensure the safety of everyone in the building. And to be quite honest with you, sometimes our young people enjoy the comfort level of having that random search. A lot of them don't like it, but it helps keep everyone safe. We do do it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Assignments. Mr. Morowski?
I have two assignments. First assignment is, General Counsel Dan Hoying and I have had some conversations with out-of-district folks that have kind of been activists within the district for some time, I think, regarding out-of-district enrollment. And my simple assignment is if somebody could investigate and determine whether or not out-of-district enrollment has any positive financial impact on the district. It was a question I was unable to answer. The way I understand it, from years ago, people who were employed at one time in the district used that as a talking point to sort of sell on the model. I don't know if it does, so. But you can answer it now, cool.
Yes, so, when we first started open enrollment, it was a positive cash flow upwards towards, about almost $2 million a year. But as our own enrollment has grown and the capacity for accepting out-of-district kids has gotten smaller, it's actually reversed itself. So, it is a cost driver for us instead of a revenue source.
So, it has a financial, a negative financial impact now? That's interesting.
Okay. Are you still?
No, I have two assignments.
Okay, but does that satisfy, are you still one?
No, no, that satisfies me. I need to think of future things I want to ask now. Thank you for that. That was the quickest assignment I've ever gotten answered. Number two is, I was curious if my friends in policy, Chairman Davis and Ms. Bates and Ms. Copeland-Dansby, since I'm not with you anymore, I feel, I feel kind of bad giving assignments to committees I'm not on because I've never done it before. But I'm gonna do it. So, policy number 2416 is in regard to student privacy and parental access to information. According to Dr. Crumpton, who I work with in my professional capacity, and obviously, here is a board member, too, and her involvement with our school-based health centers, it has come to my attention that in schools that have school-based health centers, they are allowed to survey regarding mental health issues. And I've been able to actually be proactive with some students. Mental health being as important as it is, particularly in this extremely sad week when we've lost another student at a high school. I was curious if policy could take a hard look at 2416 and see what would the possibility be of broadening the parameters of collecting student information? What I'm getting at is a day when we could be more proactive about mental health issues and identify students that might have needs in all of our schools, not just the ones that have the school-based health center. If that's not possible, it's not possible. But so, that assignment would be to policy and then, of course, to General Counsel to see if board policy 2416 can maybe be broadened and if that would give us the ability to be more proactive with kids.
Thank you. Other assignments? Ms., Board Member Bolton?
Yes, I would, again, reiterate my need to have those two different documents updated. And I have pictures of them, so I can send them to you. So, I'm real specific about it. And then, the other piece is I would really like to find a way for the administration, and I think you are doing it, to relook at the overall routing system. Not to overdo it completely, but with the mind of the high schools that are ours and the parochial system, as well as the charters and the private. And if we could just have a fresh look. And I really, I think that some of the community members that have some access to Metro data that we may not have, I don't know. I would hope that they can, I don't know, participate or at least also carry on a parallel effort. I just think a relook would be helpful for me before we move on too much farther. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bolton, would you also repeat your previous assignment about the formal recommendation for West Side?
Okay, thank you, yes. I would also like to assign to the superintendent that she present to us on the 25th
Yes.
The formal recommendation as to what program will take place in Mercy in the coming years, as well as provide for us an understanding and an overall view of accommodating the important Montessori clientele on the West Side and present as well, at least, package a West Side plan.
Thank you. And I think also, just to add to that, and I saw superintendent taking notes, but to flesh out sort of the new program scenario, what would that look like at Mercy? And then, the status of Gamble, the perspective around what needs to happen with Gamble. Okay. Any other assignments? Okay. Having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you. Yes. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
We, we need a motion, we need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
And go into executive.
And we go into executive session. Oh, my God. Can we just close out the meeting? Okay. We need a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into executive session for the purpose of employment of a public employee or official, preparations for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning compensation or other terms and conditions of employment and security matters.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton? Mr. Davis? Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye, thank you.
Dang it.
And we will meet in our...
I am not gonna be able to say the whole time, Mr. Messer.